February 7th, meeting of the Village of Cold Spring Zoning Board of Appeals. Aaron Wolf on the chair. We also have Donald McDonald, John Martin, and Grace Lowe, our other board members. Absent tonight is Eric Worth. The board has two primary roles in the village. One is to interpret the village code when there's a subjective difference opinion, opinion between the building department and the property owner regarding some activity on the property. The other one is to grant or deny variances to the code when requested by property owners. Tonight on our agenda, we've got two requests for variances. These are workshop meetings. At workshop meetings, we don't get into the merits of the application. We just make sure everything is in place so that when we have a public hearing, everything can go smoothly without delay. So, we try to avoid talking about whether something should or should not happen. Just what should or should not be in the application. So, we've got agendas up here. I made extra copies, case in need. We're starting with Six Chestnut. This is a... And we also have a review and approval minutes that'll happen after your two workshops are done. So, we've got Six Chestnut Street. This is a request for side and rear yard setbacks for a shed. It's coming after the fact for the shed and then before the fact for a six-foot gate. So, we've got... Tom, I've been emailing back and forth to get the application into shape. Why don't you come on up and tell us what's going on?
Okay.
And we'll take a look at the application as I pass it out.
Um, please, I want to keep getting a bunch of our copy of everything, including the original survey. So, basically, we... I'll start with the shed. The shed is... It's a typical garden shed. It's eight by twelve feet. It's... We... I think everybody know we email, but first of all, you know, we've been meeting to put the shed in before this process. We actually thought, because of the build town code, that any shed under one hundred and twenty feet didn't need a permit. And then, of course, we were corrected by Grade Warner. So, that's why this is happening afterwards, and I've been talking to Aaron about that. So, it's a... It's just that I think you have all the pictures of the shed and the design. It's like a standard kind of shed roof which kind of matches... Kind of matches the deck of our house, actually, but it's at the... It is at the very back of the yard on the only flat area that we had because on the left side, there's tons of precipia and a hill. And on the right side, by Charlie's property, there's also kind of a hill there. So, it's sitting, as you see in the diagram, about seven feet from the property line on one side and fourteen feet from the other, and three feet from the back. And part of that reason why, of course, naturally you want to put it in the back is just because of the... We have such a long narrow yard and all the trees that are... And the trees in the front of where it is and also the side banks and bankings. And then the gate indicated here. We found these really old kind of... They're actually five feet tall. They're six feet tall at the edge, but they're actually... They're kind of only really five feet tall in terms of their height. And they're... I think I included a picture. They're...
wrought iron.
Wrought iron gates. And he's up right up against Pete Farrell's lot. Our driveway actually flats up against his driveway, so the gate would actually only twenty-six inches from... Officially from the property line. It'd get the end of our driveway as an entrance into our yard.
We found the gates. Sorry. We found the gates in the basement of the house.
Yeah. So, I don't... Actually, the one thing I don't understand is the... The variance on the gate is asking for is the height, right? As well as the property line? Is it because of the height of the gate we're requesting? And also just because it's right up against Pete's property line?
It's... You can put up a six-foot fence within the setback if you want, but this is for up... Within the setback, I guess. But if it's between the property line and the setback line, then it's a height and setback. You're requesting... The variance is for the height in the setback, so it kind of goes together.
Got it. Yeah, and then this drawing, I don't know... I know that you'd sent me something about the fact that it was in a narrow lot that whether than the ten-foot setback was actually granted to be a... The requirement should be seven and a half feet based on that. So, I don't know if this is correct, but that's how I did it. We're still obviously asking for a variance, but I indicated seven and a half feet instead of ten because I think that was the indication from the... Code snippet that you sent me here and that said something about...
Yeah, the yard is narrower than sixty feet at the street. And it gets narrower as it goes back, so I think it does qualify for the narrow.
Right on the margin.
Yeah.
Well, how do we know that? It goes from fifty-eight feet on the front to thirty-eight feet to thirty-three feet in back. And it's two hundred and two feet long. How do we... How do we judge that it qualifies for the fifty feet?
It's sixty feet, isn't it?
Is it sixty or fifty?
I believe it's sixty.
It's sixty.
Oh, sixty. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think it's one thirty-four seventeen.
Okay, alright. I would put on the shed, it's... The shed is existing, correct? So, on your site plan, you should say eight-by-twelve foot existing shed.
Okay.
And then you should put wrought iron gate proposed. Or proposed wrought iron gate. For it's clear what we're talking about here.
Okay.
One of those points you bring up, Donald, a good one, like as far as the breadth, the width of the property. You know, it's only judged from the street level, so sixty just meets it. But what's interesting on this property, it narrows to the back. So, when you're dealing with narrow properties, you're often looking at a combined setback of four inches per foot. And it's not a straight back same-width property to the rear. So, that may get a little more interesting on the...
Years ago, I remember going through Mr. Watson about this issue or something.
Mr. Watson?
Maybe a lot, sir.
In the audience here.
Oh.
How we determine...
Okay.
Yeah, it's an interesting lot. And as you know, of course, there's several yards which I think hopefully got everybody on the application, but the neighbors that actually bought against our yard as well, including the person across the street. Across Academy Street.
Now, you emailed me a different version of the site plan, but I don't think we have, do we?
Uh, I dropped it off. Yep, I emailed it to you and I'll drop it off. It should be that one, the cleaner one. The first one I sent you had showed all the bushes and trees and...
Yes.
So, it could be...
Okay. The one that I saw was superimposed over the survey.
It had a bit of a ghosting. Yeah, it didn't print well, so I just...
Okay.
Yeah, but this was on top of the survey.
Okay.
Yeah, so it should match.
What you should do also, since this is based on a survey, you should say down in the bottom here, you should say, based on a survey, and then credit who did the survey.
Okay.
Because all your information here is coming from not your head, but this survey. So, we know what... And we know where to go to see the real survey.
Okay. And I could, you know, I could try before the public hearing again to get a better... I could do one like this and try to do one with the survey ghosted underneath if you think it would be helpful.
No, because that's gonna get into... You don't have to do that. You just have to credit where you're getting the information.
Okay, got it.
There's a accessory building. Yeah, here it is.
So, what I left off the site plan, I think I just did it for clarity. I don't know if it makes a difference or if it's helpful, is I left... I... In the red, I put where the trees are, but there's obviously a lot of plants.
All of those are all trees.
I know it's the original one, there's... There's all this stuff here, but I didn't want to...
We don't necessarily need that.
Yeah.
The historic review board might want to look at that, but we don't.
You should... You should look at... You should be looking at this too. This is accessory buildings and garages, which this is. And you've got a ten-foot setback, one and a half story height, and then it can't exceed more than thirty percent of the aggregate... Of the area of the required rear yard. So, the area... This area should be calculated. And then, if this is over thirty percent of that area, then, you know, we should know one way or the other.
What is considered the rear yard? The area of the rear yard, is that the whole rear yard? I mean, that's definitely not thirty percent of the rear yard.
Probably...
I actually put in the application the percentage... Oh, I might have been wrong, but it was like literally point one percent.
That's the entire lot.
I'm just reading the code to you.
Oh.
And here's the code for accessory building garage.
Yeah.
And which is what you have, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
And the code is saying that an accessory building in the garage may be located in the rear yard.
Yeah.
Provided that it's not over one and a half stories tall.
Which is fine.
Which is yours.
Yep.
Such buildings should not be... Should be ten feet from a lot line, so you got a problem there.
Yeah.
And then it says, all such buildings in aggregate shall not occupy more than thirty percent of the area of the required rear or side yard. So, the way I read that, it can't exceed more than thirty percent of the rear or side yard area.
So, what is that?
The area between, the way I read that, is this. That area.
Well, where does it stop?
At the property lines and at the ten-foot rear yard, the ten-foot setback line. Let's see. All such buildings in aggregate shall not more than thirty percent of the area of the required rear yard. No. What's the setback for a rear yard?
It's twenty feet.
Thirty feet? Twenty feet? Can't remember.
It's twenty feet. Side yard setbacks are ten.
Ten and the rear is...
But it can be different now, now that we have a narrow lot, which is sixty feet in length.
Let's see what the... Let's see what the... This is our one zone. Is it our one zone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the rear yard is twenty feet. So, you would take a line. The rear yard is...
Okay, so twice what I have there?
It would be twenty feet.
Yeah.
And then it would be this area. And you would just calculate what this area is.
Okay.
And then you would say the percentage of that is of that.
Okay, okay.
So, it's obviously...
Yeah. Do you want, I should annotate that on here, what the percentage is?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not able to get the information.
Are you looking for the accessory building definition?
Yeah. That is formed.
Yeah.
So, just to be clear, just to make sure that this is correct. I know that Jeff has put on there and that we've mentioned the ten... There was a ten-foot setback. Is that incorrect then? It should be... It should... I know that we're using twenty feet for the calculation, but is that... Am I asking for a variance of ten foot or actually of twenty feet? Because...
No, that twenty foot is the rear yard definition, but...
Right.
It would go from the back property line and move in towards your property.
So, I apologize for mentioning that earlier, but...
This was... What the code is saying is that you can have your accessory building with a ten feet of the rear yard.
Okay.
But it's saying that the size of the building can't be more than thirty percent of the entire rear yard.
Which is a five feet.
Area which cross out there.
Okay, good. And that's correct.
So, you're gonna... You're gonna put a... You're gonna do a line there to show what that is, and you're gonna show your calculations there.
Yep, got it. Thank you.
That's why we have workshops.
Yeah. I can't imagine a more complicated structure, which hopefully will maybe be in the future.
This is one thirty-seven... One thirty-four to seventeen A. And then one. One.
So, that's where the ten feet is coming from.
Right.
So, it can't be... It should be ten feet away, but it still has to be under thirty percent of the required twenty-foot setback. So, that's the confusing part.
Okay. And are these seven and a half foot setback lines upon here, is that correct based on the fact that it's a narrow lot? That you had sent me that?
So, let's talk about that and what the required... If we need a variance for that for the shed. I don't think that we do. But that should be calculated out just to be sure.
Here it is. Less than sixty feet minimum side yard should be reduced to seven and a half feet provided two side total is at least four inches of each foot of lot width. And so, again, we're gonna have the issue of how do you calculate the lot width when you have one end bigger than the other end?
So, let's calculate it out at sixty feet and see if it meets that, because I think it will. So, sixty...
It's basically divided by three, so it's twenty. Four inches every foot?
So, twenty... Twenty feet and seven.
It meets... It's twenty-one feet.
So, we've got twenty-one feet.
Four inches for every foot, so you've got four inches times fifty-eight?
Yeah, to be exact at the front.
So, fifty-eight over four is what?
Is that what it is at the front?
I mean, no.
I was...
One second. Okay.
So, it's gonna be less than that even?
Nineteen point three three.
So, I didn't think that we needed a variance for that.
Fifty... Wait, fifty-eight times... It's fifty-eight times four. So, it's two, three, twenty-three. It's two hundred and thirty-two inches. One is two hundred and thirty-two.
Two by four, and you get...
I divide by twelve. To eleven feet. So... They... Yeah, he would exceed it.
John, is that...
Yeah, do... Give me your... Give me your request one more time on the two hundred and thirty-three inches.
He's got fifty-eight feet.
Right.
And it's four inches of...
Yeah, so basically, you take fifty-eight and you divide it by three.
No, you'd multiply times four, wouldn't you? For every foot, he needs four inches of side yard. So, he's got fifty-eight times four.
John skipping the extra stuff.
Yeah.
So, I do all the stuff.
You're going... You're going all the way to inches. He's just going directly to feet.
Oh, okay. Alright, okay. That's alright.
But we arrive at the same answer.
Yeah, it is the same, yeah.
What do you get?
It's nineteen point three three.
So, Grace, just to make sure you're following along.
This is my first one, so I'm catching up all of it.
No need math, or someone's math.
Lots in Cold Spring are much narrower than they should be according to the code, or the code is much... Requires much wider than it should according to the lot size depending on your perspective. So, there are exceptions for narrow lots that allow narrower setbacks. So, this house is not atypical at all, the lot width anyway. So, it's a fairly common thing for us to do this math, so you might think we would be faster.
So, the nineteen we came up with divided between the two sides or...
As long as... And what he... What they have here is fourteen feet on one and seven feet on the other, so that gives them twenty...
So, it's up to them how they split it.
Twenty-one total, and they need it at least nineteen point three three, so they have it. But if it turned out to be seventeen feet, then they'd be looking at a variance.
Yeah.
But with regards to the narrow lot, is it any different on the back setback for a narrow lot?
No, it's just the width.
Still, okay. That was my understanding.
It just speaks to side yards. So, we don't need a variance for that. We want to check for the shed. We want to check the area of the required rear yard, so to the twenty feet. And then, we need a variance for the placement in regards to the back property line. And that is on the application, right?
Yes.
Do you... Do you know how to calculate the exact area of that back with that... With that twenty feet with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that. Is Academy Street right to the backside of that shed?
Yeah. There's a... There's a... Probably a ten-foot retaining wall. Concrete retaining wall. And then...
The shed comes just below the retaining wall and just slopes up.
Uh huh.
So, it's...
You can see this in this picture here. That railing is the sidewalk of Academy Street.
Right, there.
So, it's like directly right there.
So, is everybody okay with the required... With the requested variance for the shed? Should we move on to the gate?
Yeah, I'm good. I think everything is explained here, and Donald made some good...
Donald's still studying, let's see.
Well, how are you gonna calculate the back area with that angle?
I'll probably have to calculate, you know, I'll have to calculate it as a square and then minus this area.
And then add the area of the triangle.
Have to, you know, I'd have to like take it as a square and then minus the area of the triangle.
We'll be into geometry.
Well, I'm saying like, how do you... I'm not trying to be argumentative, and I'm not trying to belittle you at all.
Yeah.
But I just don't know how you would actually go about calculating that.
How would you do it?
Because...
Because then we'll do it that way.
I'm not a surveyor, so I don't have to worry. I'm... It's not me that's the... I just... I just don't know how someone other than a surveyor would be able to know... You know, I mean, I guess you could... Somehow, you've got to represent that angle.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not even sure that that's a right angle. And I'm... This is not gonna be a huge area, but...
Yeah.
I'm just asking the question because...
What I would probably do, because I'm not... What I would probably do is because I'm pretty sure it's less than thirty percent, is I would probably just calculate it as a square and like ignore the angle. So, it'd actually make it...
Trouble C, like we did on the front.
It would actually make it less than it actually is.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I'll actually forego the extra because I don't think we need it.
Alright, that makes sense.
And getting to your point, then, by way of doing the calculation with an extra sheet just for that area, showing the space and how it was calculated, you wanted... Would that help?
All I want to... All I want to do is I just wanna... I just want to reinforce the point that... 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 Sometimes when you get in especially irregularly shaped lots, it's beyond the capacity of the normal layperson. And you might be an architect, you might be a surveyor, you might be the civil engineer, you might be, I don't know what. But I'm just saying that... That I'm making the point that... That... That this one... Your solution is a good solution, okay? And you're showing us what you're doing and why. You're saying, I can't calculate this to the nearest square inch, but I can do this, and that's... It's gonna be less than that, and that hangs together logically, and it fits the situation we're in.
I'll do a... I'll do a separate drawing of a magnified view of that area on a separate sheet, and I'll show that.
And then I'll point that out.
Alright, so, you know, we've...
Because there is that code provision anyway, so we have to...
So, that's a good solution. That's why I asked the question.
That's a good answer.
So, okay, we're good.
I'll just add an additional drawing to it, so it's super clear.
I guess it seems like it doesn't really matter, but I would say that you never know who's gonna show up at your public hearing, especially because of the circumstances.
Yeah, no, I want to go... That's why we're here.
How would you calculate that? And you're... And somebody would say, well, I traced the survey and I guesstimated this.
Yeah.
I know it's within a couple inches. And then there's somebody in the history of this where a couple inches turned out to be a huge deal.
Right.
And they're gonna go, well, you know...
Why do you...
I had to go higher, you know, the surveyor to calculate, and I had to pay a fee to have that done. And now you're accepting people just winging it.
I get it.
So, we're... We're... You're doing a solution which is bulletproof, okay?
Okay, cool.
So, that's good.
Alright. I totally understand.
Because these questions would be asked, and then all of a sudden, your hearing would get adjourned.
Yeah.
So, we need more information.
And you come back with a better drawing or something, yeah?
Okay, what about the gate?
So, for the gate, again, we've got the narrow yard. And it's not gonna fit this time because it's...
Yeah, it's kind of like any gate, like it's either like no gate at all or a gate. What the gate looks like is obviously after the air.
It's six feet to there?
It's actually five, six feet to there, to the top on the left.
Oh.
Yeah. I measured the tallest part.
Okay. And how are you gonna mount that on the property side? The property line side?
So, you can see the...
A footing in the ground.
Yeah, there's a footing here, a footing here for ideally either this gate or if the Heritage Board doesn't approve it, a different gate. But it would literally be... These are our trees, like Pete and I, it's kind of right on the property line, the trees. So, it's literally, what is it, twenty-six inches from official property line. It's this footing. And that's narrow where obviously our driveway is, that's within the backyard, that's all we want.
Okay, so nothing taller than the gate?
No.
Was the purpose of the question?
No, oh, no, no, no.
No, you have the... Yeah.
Yeah.
We have steel posts that will anchor into the ground, and it would be that.
Literally would look like that, except for in the footings.
So, six feet up to the top of...
Correct.
Of that.
And this is five.
So, just to... The code doesn't say anything about gates, so this is a fence as far as we're concerned.
Oh, okay, got it.
But it's... Obviously, it's a gate. So, the question that I wanted to discuss with the board here is that we've got this... This side building, which sticks out further than the main part of the house, and whether the gate is right on the line, should we count that side building as part of the... As being in the setback, or do we just go to the edge of the house? Do you have any... You guys have any insight in where the gate lines up on that line? Oops, I forgot.
Oh.
This line right here?
The gate, it lines right up with the house here, like. And then the house... Yeah, like right up with it, because this...
What's your question?
This porch is exactly...
Yeah.
My question is, would you say that the gate overlaps this front edge of the porch? Or does it only overlap the back edge of the house?
Uh... It wouldn't really overlap either way because it's gonna be right on the...
It's set.
Sorry, I don't mean... I don't mean... I mean the line coming out of the gate. If you were to draw a line from the gate extending...
It actually would probably be slightly... And set slightly from here, so it would actually hit the... It wouldn't actually...[1666.22]
It actually would probably be slightly set slightly from here, so it would actually hit the, it wouldn't actually, it would actually be slightly set back from this.
By a couple inches probably.
Okay.
So it actually, is that what you mean?
Yes, so it doesn't, the line, if we drew a line through the gate, it wouldn't intersect that shit.
No, it would actually probably be more like, like if that's an exaggerated view, it kind of comes back a little bit.
Because.
You can see, you can see here, right?
There's the cor rings right here.
Yeah, that's the edge of the house, you would go in front of that a little bit.
Okay, so if we determined we had nineteen feet to play with?
Yeah, nineteen feet three.
Then we've got ten feet over here and we need another nine feet. Oh yeah.
Well, you know, as you said, what's interesting on, on this part of the property is that you've got a portion of the building extending into that.
Yeah.
And it's all, it's grandfathered, I imagine. I mean, how old's the building? I mean, this isn't, in addition, it comes after the code, doesn't it?
No, that has been there for a long time.
My question was just whether, because when we're calculating the required variance that we're granting for this fence, whether we needed to, I guess maybe it doesn't matter, but we've got ten feet already, we don't have four feet.
We have ten feet more.
Setback.
Ten feet above the house.
So there's this ten-foot yard, ten-foot yard here, there's only a four-foot yard there. So I'm just trying to figure out, does this line up with the ten-foot yard or the four-foot yard?
Oh.
I see.
Got it.
Sorry.
And we can move against whatever.
This is exactly in line with the house and the gate will be set probably, we can tell you six inches or something back based on those photos.
So.
Well, I think it would just have to take into account that this portion of the property leaves you only four feet on this side. And this portion of the property is whatever this amount is and the variance would have to look at the combination to what.
Well, except they're saying that the gate is on the ten-foot part of the yard, where the yard is ten feet. They're saying that the gate lines up like that. So it doesn't line up like that, it lines up.
I'm sorry, is this the existing house and you prop them up?
Yeah, correct.
Alright, and so you're gonna put them in the position you have here?
Approximately, yes, so this brick, this, this brick sidewalk lies exactly at the house. So we put it just slightly in front, you can see the footings.
Yeah.
And then we were planning to expand the brick.
So, no, so this footing is for this gate?
Correct.
Okay.
Or any, or whatever gate.
Or whatever gate, alright, so you're gonna, you're gonna put, you're gonna put a, you're gonna sink something in the center of this thing.
A steel post.
And clearly this is in front of the corner.
Correct.
So then you're actually, you could by rights move these to there. That's what you're saying, right?
And that's kind of, I put it right on the line just because it was.
But you could.
Yes.
And then you're not in line with that and then here you could say to help yourself, instead of, these gates are not this six-foot gray. Like you could say, proposed wrought iron gates, height varies from six feet to whatever that distance is.
Five to six feet.
Height varies, which is exactly what's going on with those gates.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is that if you look at where he's put the center of this footings, it's clearly to the, to the street side, the corner of the house. And by rights, he could move those out of line with the edge. And now it looks to me as if that's.
And that's what they've said, is that it's out of line.
It is, and this is actually as shown, so.
So, so John points out that we should.
Show it a little further back.
Yeah, that might help people out at the hearing, but John says that we, that they only have four feet here and they will have zero feet here essentially or what, cause they're coming all, they're coming all the way in that far. So we're gonna, they are fifteen feet short of what they need for the side yards.
Okay.
Fifteen feet is no change, so then they need to, we would be, they are requesting a variance for the whole length of that gate.
Do you remember the, the Garden Street addition?
Which one?
This is the big green building near closest to the church. What happened was that the, there was a portion of the house on the north side that jutted out and it was even closer to the northerly property line. And we worked from there, that's what we had to work from, to the nearest point of the house for the whole north boundary line. I mean, we can just go back and look at the, the language of the narrow lot.
Right.
The way we used to do it was to whatever portion of the building came closest on that sideline.
Right, I got it.
Okay, everybody comfortable with the, what we need for the gate?
Yeah.
Grace, do you have any questions?
Not right now.
Both of you, I, I think you had one question.
I have a question about the shed though, cause I was just staring at the survey versus the site plan and I just wanna make sure. So the, the three foot is off, it's not off the wall, right? It's off the property line?
The wall is the property line.
It's not the way it's showing up on the survey.
It's off the wall.
So it looks like your property line comes off the wall.
Oh, cause of the, oh, cause of the angle?
Yeah, like a cut skin.
Yeah, that's weird, I saw that too. So this black line is actually the property line, but there's this weird little thing, but there's a wall there. I don't understand how that works, but what's the, this little area in here?
Yeah, you can see where they.
That's the wall and that's officially the property line.
So you, you measured three feet off the wall, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that, you, you would have to look at the property line.
You have to go off the property line. This is, this is irrelevant, that's not your property, whatever. You have to go off the property line.
Okay, so I just have to re-measure that, so it could be like two feet instead of three.
Yeah, so you've got, you've got, and you should probably, well, you don't have to know because you should actually also put property line. Put, you know, say property line, maybe you did already, I don't know.
Yeah, cause it, it says where the pin sets are.
Yeah, okay. Good catch. Yeah. One, yeah.
I actually measured on here too, I think it's on there, one point seven, I think it's.
This is New York.
Actual surveys to scale.
Well, it's also just as weird, right? You always think it's property line's gonna be on the wall, it's like somewhere weird.
Okay, any other questions on the variance part and then we can get to the details of the.
I'm a, I'm, I'm a little confused about the gate, but I think if you guys, as long as you guys are all in agreement, I, it's fine. I, it's, I know that it's, it's super tight and that's all I know, it's like completely no, there's no face at all, so I trust you guys.
He needs to work through the language for what he's gonna be asking for.
So we should give him the code section.
For the extent of the variance for the.
It's the code section on an hour lot.
Right.
What is it, one thirty-four seventeen, I think? I, I don't have a copy of the code. Never seen one. And I tried to get it through the internet, but it's not getting through.
Seems like you would have some code on.
I try to remember instead.
It's one thirty-four to seventeen.
E?
E. Yeah, one thirty-four to seventeen E.
Yeah, so just look at that language, just run it across, just go over it a few times and it'll begin to make a little bit more sense as it goes.
So what, what, this is just out of curiosity, there's lots of houses that have fences around their property, so what, how do you do that?
Well, those fences, if they're under four feet.
Under four feet in height?
That's right.
Oh, then it can be right on the property line.
Yeah.
So the variance is because it's over four feet.
Exactly.
Oh, alright.
Okay, that's what I was.
It's only, it's only because you're dealing with a height.
So if we don't get this, we can just get, we can just get a four-foot gate.
Right.
Yeah.
Alright, so it's like, we need some kind of gate.
But, you know, I mean, it would maybe fall within the lingo of the fence because it's a little bit of a.
A barrier, a concrete wall.
But it's not a true running the, you know, point-to-point on the property fence.
Got it.
So there's, there might be a little more leeway, we don't know. We'd have to look at it. But that's, it's different a little bit.
Okay.
But there'll be people who have been where or another, so we'll look at it a little.
Grace, do you see on that, on that survey, where does they, where are they, where are they saying the distance between the covered porch and the property line?
They're just giving you the whole distance, it's just saying ten.
Might have actually just measured that.
So we don't know.
I thought I saw it on there. I measured, I measured it too, but there.
I can't imagine it's not there, but I don't see it.
So that covered porch was built back, you know.
It's a brick, yeah, like the lower area is solid brick and it looks like it's something years old in there.
Well, you can get it by measuring the covered porch.
Yeah.
Section going out from the house and deduct.
But you gotta find the property line, you gotta find the property.
You don't have to find it because the, they're telling.
We can scale it off of the actual survey.
Okay.
You can just use a ruler and scale.
Okay.
Yeah, you see the ten, ten feet.
He's giving you ten feet to the property line.
Yeah.
I think that.
And the only reason why this is important that, you know, if we were to grant a variance, we have to know exactly what we're granting you, you know, down to a few inches.
So we'll just, we'll scale it off of the survey, Tom, with a ruler?
Yeah, I did, I mean, it might have gone be.
That probably is how you got this.
I was trying to be as accurate as I could, but there could be a little, little double check it.
Well, I, I think we can make it simple and we can just grant the variance for the fence height for that specific section of fence. And we don't have to worry about the setback, we don't want to. And we're limiting it to that specific gate and nothing else.
As long as you, you know. Yeah, I suppose it may be the case. Because again, it is just, it's a fence, it's not necessarily a structure. Coming to the, coming towards the side yard setback. It's not a structure per se, it is a fence and the issue is the height, not necessarily that it's a structure.
Yeah, I think, I think it's probably easier and clearer so down the road, somebody doesn't say, oh, well, you gave the variance there. So we're gonna build a covered driveway. So I would just say we limit it to the fence.
Yeah, and we'll just, you know, I'll just run through the code just to double check it, but I think we're, yeah, I, I think it's mostly looking at the structures.
Should we move on to the rest of the application?
Go ahead.
Okay, so we've got an updated, you guys sent me an updated list of neighbors.
Yes.
Here. So I asked Tom to include everybody who's on any side of their property, even across Academy and across Chestnut or the church. Did you guys include?
No, but you said I didn't need to include the church.
Um, did I?
Yeah.
Because the, their building is further south, is that what I said?
I don't know, I think you said everybody, but you didn't need to include the church, but I can.
Or because they can't see it, what do you guys think? Or should the church be?
The church?
I'd have to look at it, you have a map, please?
We're across from the yard, the grass area.
That's the house that we let, right here, the house there, we let know across Academy. Are you talking about the church in the front or the church in the back?
The church in the front across Chestnut.
Yeah, no, never, I definitely can't see it, but.
Anybody have an opinion on that?
Again, I'd have to look at a map, I mean, it's one thing to say that, you know, they can't see the shed, but if they're probably the nearest property owner, like with a direct view, they could.
I mean, they're gonna see, might see the gate, they're not gonna see that, that's like blocked by the house.
I mean, the always safest thing is just to give them notice.
Oh yeah, I don't mind at all. I just, I was, I was pretty sure though you'd said everyone except for the church, but if you need me to put them on there, we can just amend this for sure.
Yeah.
I know I said no to the church on Academy, but Saint Mary's, I thought I said yes.
Okay, I don't, I don't even think that came up, but if it did, I must have missed it, I'm sorry.
That's alright, so let's see if this thing is working.
And all I did, just so you know, was put their names and addresses on this form, I have not walked around and told them, am I supposed to go around?
We're gonna send you, you're gonna send them a copy of the notice that gets printed in the paper.
Okay.
Are we using the sign?
Yeah, the sign is, the sign is active.
Yeah, I saw the sign working there tonight.
Alright, my map is not working, but I'm, I'm okay with not notifying the church. But if you want to, I mean, they, they're, the building itself is further south of your house, right?
Yes.
But their yard.
Part, part, like the grass is across from us and then their, their building is.
Donald, do you have any thoughts?
More across from.
I don't think the church is gonna care about this, the gate. I mean, that, that, it's like, and I'm, I'm all for notifying everybody in the world, but they're like over here compared to where this is. Are you, you got all these, you're getting everybody here, right?
Everybody, yeah.
Okay.
You know layout better than I do.
I mean, I only have one point, if you wanted to notice the front of the church, notify the church. I'm only one point, if you wanted to do the church, do the church.
Do the church, you should show up.
Well, at least they, you know, we covered the base.
Yeah, I don't mind, it's, yeah, we can.
Let's do the church.
Yeah, I think we should just. Notice is notice, if, you know.
Do the church, you get the whole block.
Yeah.
Literally, so do the church.
You know, what would, if they come back afterwards and say, well, you never gave us notice.
Okay, so at the church. We've got the short environmental form, does anybody have any questions about that? There's no reason this needs to be a non-form application, in my opinion. Unless there's any question about, you know, the shed in the creek.
The creek right to the rear of it?
It's on the side.
Seasonal, seasonal stream, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there is.
That's where it starts to go under, isn't it?
Yeah. Doesn't look like it would be a problem. Is that water dripping?
I don't see any sign of it, it might be the radiator.
We've got a copy of the denied permit, you guys have paid the escrow and the fee.
No.
Oh, you haven't?
I kept me, I kept bringing to Jeff, it's like I needed a check, so I, he said to bring it back, so I can do that tomorrow.
Okay. So. So you need to do that, I'll, I'll check with Jeff and we'll, I'll wait for that.
I'll do it tomorrow, yeah.
Till we schedule the public hearing. Copy of a deed.
Yeah, we should have that.
Okay, property survey, site plan, design plans, assessment forms, zoning conforming chart. Okay, so I think we're all alright for the application. Has anybody seen a reason not to hold a public hearing at our next meeting? Moving up enough people here?
What would that date be?
It would be the twenty-first.
Oh, this month?
Yep.
Okay, we can do the notice, you can do the noticing and all this stuff in the.
Yep, I will, I'll follow up and you, you get the, as soon as Jeff tells me that you've got the money in, I'll send, I'll write up the, the legal notice and you'll send it out to your neighbors when you do that. You take it to the post office and you get the green receipt. And write, please write the address on the receipt itself and not just the number, so that we can see who, who got them sent. We don't worry if they, if they sign it or not, just as long as they were sent.
You're gonna send me something that I will then, I will mail to each of these people?
I'm gonna tell you exactly what to do with that, so.
Okay, cool. And should I, aside from the payment tomorrow, these vary, the amendments to this plan and the stuff I'm going to do, should I be filing that with you guys before the hearing or just bring it to the hearing?
You can file it beforehand.
Just so you guys have a chance to look at it, okay.
Yeah, just hand it to Jeff and he'll put it in the box.
Six copies of it, okay. Or a copy?
Does that date work for everybody, two weeks from today?
Yeah.
Donald?
That's good.
Alright, so these three people.
We'll notify Eric too.
And I don't need to bring for this hearing, cause of, all this application will be in the hearing, like I don't need to bring this again, right? All this stuff, I just need to update this.
We'll hold on to it.
We'll hold on to it.
Okay, great, so I'll just update this and I'll make sure that you guys get a copy advanced and I'll also bring a copy of this.
Alright.
Thanks guys, it's been educational. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
All along.
Thank you.
I'll follow up the email.
Okay, thanks again.
Alright, let's clean this up.
Let's keep it as a packet, right? What do you want? You wanna gather everything independently?
Let's keep them as packets.
However you wanna do it, I will sort it out later.
Oh yeah?
These things are all gonna be redone, so this here, you want this and you want this.
Here's a packet for you.
And all of these. Organize it later.
Lucky they didn't build off the property line.
They're what?
They're lucky they didn't build off their property.
Oh, yeah, cause I guess they could have it redone all the way back to the wall, yeah. Okay. And come on up.
Should we get a list?
And, yeah, this is. So this is a, and it'll tell us the details, this was a minor discrepancy in the survey of six inches and the property is being sold and the bank or the lawyer wants to have a variance of six inches.
Well, yeah, it's, we did a subdivision for Richard Kay. we did a subdivision for Richard Kay. For fifteen. And I missed six inches of the property. The deed, tax map said a hundred and fifty feet, the deed said a hundred and fifty feet and a couple of paragraphs down, except, it said except for six inches. And I missed it.
And that had been sold to a neighbor in the fifties or something, right?
Yeah, so instead of having a hundred and fifty feet with sufficient width for two lots, it was only a hundred and forty-nine and a half feet. Not, so we don't have sufficient width for two lots. Subdivided it with showing a planning board a hundred and fifty feet. Richard builds the other house, Richard sells, sells the lot. Of course, when a lot comes in, we do the survey, I noticed that I missed the six inches and I reported it to the purchaser, so. I just missed it.
Why would somebody sell six inches to the neighbor?
I, well, I don't, and that's kind of a strange thing because the hedges and stuff are on the, on the original line, sort of, but the, I don't know what caused the six inches. That lot next door, you know, one of the obvious things would have been to go to the neighbor and try to buy the six inches back, except that neighbor was only seventy feet wide, so they would be increasing their nonconformity. They have, they have a seventy foot wide lot, nonconformity. So it just, it just didn't make sense to even approach them on it because because they would be more nonconforming and they needed variance, so. Simple mistake on our part. We discovered it and we turned out the survey of the property that's being sold, which is the northerly or the northwestly of the two lots, and reported the six inches. The attorney objected and rightly so, because it's a nonconforming lot and it's illegally nonconforming. So we've applied for a variance to reduce the width. Your agenda, I think, said lot size variance, but it's actually a width variance. I just, so when a public notice, I would prefer to say width.
In other words, it's seventy-four point five rather than seventy-five.
Correct.
So you're asking for a point five foot variance from the required seventy-five?
Correct.
Correct.
So what we've given you is an application, I know we're putting in the checks. For a variance, we've responded to each of the questions having to do with the variance. And we all submitted a deed. We submitted a list of adjoining, the adjoining are all around the touching and across the street. And, and then we submitted a statement of support and I don't know if I've done this before with you, but you're probably aware that the state law for villages requires, this gives you a balancing test of five factors. And kind of your, the application sort of hints at those five factors, but we discuss each of the five factors. And the way the law is supposed to work is that if, if on balance the answers for those five questions is ways in favor of granting the variance, the loss to the applicant will be greater than the loss to the village, it goes to the applicant and vice versa. So I will admit, we're offering prejudiced point of view here, but I think it's very, you know, when you go through those, when you go through those reasons, the reasoning here, I think you'll see that it does weigh in favor of it. Of granting it, I hope you find, obviously, I hope you find that to be the case.
Just out of curiosity, when you had the initial full lot before it was subdivided, was there, was there enough property to actually subdivide it or is that what we're talking about, where six inches is short?
That's correct. We're six, this, the property needs to be, the zoning requires a lot to be seventy-five feet wide.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, we have a hundred and forty-nine point five feet wide, so there's no way to drop, divide it into two without, so we thought about,
How did you, how'd you get up with, how'd you come out with a hundred and fifty the first time?
The deed says two lots on a file map, and if you look at the file map, it's a hundred and fifty feet on the file map, on the sub, original subdivision from back in the twenties or thirties. Tax map had a hundred and fifty feet, full map, I have to say a hundred and fifty feet.
But it didn't actually ever measure out to a hundred and fifty? Just out of curiosity, is that?
Further down in the deed, there was another paragraph that says, of, except for the northerly six inches, and to be perfectly frank, I didn't read it carefully enough.
No. So, so, so it's not like it just disappeared, it's just, it was recognized right from the start?
It had been sold, it had been sold off to a neighbor years and years ago and what can I say?
I got you.
I misread it.
I got you, I got you.
That's the second part, I missed it.
So I, I think, hmm, I mean, I just, I was the chair of the planning board when we did this and I remember, it was a very contentious hearing and.
That's my other point. I was gonna get to that.
Well, that's not for tonight. Do we have the application and, I think it sounds like we have the application in order. Yeah. We've, we've got everything, is there a, the short environmental form?
I don't think I did one, but I didn't think you needed a short environmental, one for a variance, I thought that was exempt from secret. Very various. I'd be happy to apply one.
Yeah.
We get it from everybody, okay, it's just checking the boxes.
Yeah, but I, yeah, technically it probably wouldn't be necessary, but it might as well just get it, yeah.
I'll be happy to submit it tomorrow.
Okay.
I see the application.
So it, which, is it the southerly most lot or the northerly most?
No, the northerly most lot.
Lot, okay, got you.
Okay, good.
Yep.
So we'll, we'll do everything that I told the previous applicants with the notice and I forgot to mention to them, we have a new part of the code that requires a public hearing sign, so.
I, I overheard you, you mentioned the sign.
Yeah, so.
It's a big orange sign with black letter kind of thing.
No, it's much prettier than that. It's like the one in front of the silver spoon as you walk out.
Oh, I didn't see it.
You get that. So you'll get that from Jeff and I'll send instructions.
You guys got architectural approval for the, the design of the sign?
Temporary signs are allowed.
So, so the twenty-first?
Yeah, so if you can do the twenty-first, we'll schedule.
That means we have to have the application, the thing next Monday, right, into the paper?
Yep, we'll get it in on Monday for.
Cause you only have one, well, there's two papers coming out before the meeting, but it'll be too close, the second one.
It'll be too close, yeah.
So they go in, they go in two weeks' time.
And what about the mailing, so we got that all straight?
If I tell, if I tell him tomorrow or Monday, they get it in Wednesday paper, so then it'll also be in the Wednesday paper.
The day, you immediately, so, and do you put that in or do I put it?
I, Jeff does it.
Jeff does?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's got the checkbook, so he does it.
And.
And then it comes out of.
The notices?
Right, so you'll, you've done this before, you.
Yeah, I know that.
One thing that's new that we're asking for is to write the address of the recipient on the receipt, so that we have more than just the number to go back to.
Okay. No problem.
I guess we should have had you go first.
Yeah, first come, first served. Good, thank you. First time I've ever seen you with dungarees.
Oh, yeah?
I wear them all the time.
It's all he ever wears.
You wear them well.
Thank you. Thanks.
Coming up next is very.
I'll leave this with you.
Very short, so a minutes to.
This is environmental from Fred. I'd love to do that after that, but.
Take a nice.
Good night.
Oh, come on, seriously? Really?
Just kidding, probably.
Don't.
See how it's played, brother is. Where's the?
It's the more the merrier in the sense of like.
Is that really how that works?
Oh, we got a good group, we got a good group. Yeah, great, good. But you know, you've seen the data.
Yeah.
People are grassroots, not.
And, and you've seen it before, was that undeveloped?
Notification.
Yeah, it's a vast improvement.
Yes, so, by the way. After the, on, in Hudson Highland and everything, I told him a little bit about your, your landscape. And he, his passion is landscaping and I thought if you, you guys could get together and.
Who is it?
It's Evan Thompson.
Yep, we've got even an Osmonds.
Is it State Parks or is it?
I'm telling you, that he, he definitely into the
Is that Frank? Okay, oh, he's got him, alright.
Good insight of whatever you.
Yeah, that'd be awesome, it'd be really fun.
Passion.
We're looking for the minutes that are printed out. Oh, here. John, Grace wasn't actually interviewed, but we can if you want.
There's all this one meeting, right?
I read it, they're, they're good.
So.
Which meeting are you?
There's also parks and trails.
Which meeting are we, could we vote on?
So we're about to vote on, vote on November fifteenth, twenty eighteen.
We actually, it's great that we have, can I say that again, more people advocating.
John, can you take a moment to make a motion to approve these minutes?
Okay. I'm, I'm in a sales pitch here. I make a motion to approve the minutes as drafted, of the minutes of eleven fifteen, two thousand and eighteen.
I'll second it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved and I think we're ready to adjourn. Yep, any? I make a motion to adjourn?
I second it.
Okay, all in favor, adjourned.
I gotta get you voicing up now. Get your name in there, make sure you have me.
I tried to get my, the little N first.
Yeah, good catch on the, the property line at the end.
Nice, see?